Okay, today is Tuesday, December 6th, 2022. This is a regularly scheduled school board meeting. It is 6:05. I would like to call the meeting to order. First order of business is I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session in accordance with Public Officers' Law, Article 7, Section 105, and District Policy 1525 to discuss matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, disposssession, dismissal, or removal of a particular person. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, can I get a motion on that?
Motion.
First by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Barry. All those in favor to head into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, we are going to head into executive session. We will be back in approximately 17 minutes. Okay, we are back from executive session. Can I get a motion from a board member to enter back into regular session? First by Tim, second by Amanda. All those in favor of entering regular session, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are back in regular session. So we are on to item 4A, Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is up on the stage for everyone. I am going to ask Barry to listen to the question.
I am the United States of America. Under your authority, we understand all nation under God, in this whole liberty of the world.
Thank you. Up next is item B, forum count. We do have six board members present tonight, so we do have a forum. Four is required for that. Next item, the next two actually are very exciting. The first one is a presentation from our music department, Brian Franco. And then right after that will be followed by a presentation by the...
The floor.
That's our panel.
So, that's the panel.
Sorry, we're all performing. So the board, we're going to move as we flip around so we can see some of these guys.
Where is the flag, Brian?
Anywhere in the audience is fine. All right, good evening. My name is Brian Franco. I'm the Director of Performing Arts Technology Program here at Skinny Atlas. So, as we have just undergone a major update to this high school auditorium, I had a couple of students in the Performing Arts Technology Program do a little bit of a demonstration of the return on investment as in terms of what has been going on in the space and what it is now capable of. It has obviously undergone some wonderful cosmetic upgrades, but also there's a lot of wonderful technology in the space as well that we would like to show off this evening. So although Olivia Eller didn't work on this presentation, she was unable to present tonight. However, Tommy Catalani is going to be talking about our digital acoustic system, and Aiden Ward is going to be talking about our lighting system, which is two of the systems that were upgraded in addition to our sound and projection systems. Obviously, we have a wonderful projector as well as a scenic projector that was used in Anastasia, if you saw that last year. So without further ado, Aiden is going to start by talking about the new lighting system that has been installed in our auditorium.
Okay, so to start, I have a presentation that kind of goes over some of the new lighting fixtures we installed. And first are our ETC Source4 Ellipsoidals. And these are kind of a nice light to replace what we have with the tongue stains as these are LED lights that support multiple colors. We can shadow them for specific focuses, and we can have goggles placed inside them to create a pattern. And it's the most common light we have in the auditorium, which you can see up in the torms and then on the front electric. And just to mention, I'll demonstrate these after the PowerPoint. Second, we have new follow spots that were installed into our light deck upstairs. The benefit of these are to emphasize a performer, particularly when we have a crowded stage, and they're also able to be manually focused to a performer. And they're kind of just adjusted and put onto a performer by a manual spot operator. Next up, above our stage, we have new LED strip lights, and these are very useful lights. We've used in all our drama club and concert productions since they were installed. They can throw a lot of light onto stage very quickly. They can be multiple different colors, and they're just very helpful for establishing different moods and settings in shows, such as kind of the nice wash that you saw in Anastasia. And they're, yeah. Next up, we have 20 new park hands, which are right here. The benefit of these is they're small and obviously very portable. So if we have a light that we want to shine onto something on a set or a concert, we can pull one of these out if we can't use one of our main auditorium lights for that and just patch it very quickly into our system. Turn it on, LED obviously for any color, and that's the benefit of those. And finally, we have our new Chauvet Intimidator Intelligent Lights. And these are able to shift their colors, their location, their patterns. And they're very beneficial to create ambience, energy on stage. And these lights are also just very beneficial for other elements of live performance in theater. So to demonstrate, we're first going to bring the projector screen up. And I have a few letting you prepare to demonstrate the new system. So first, to demonstrate, I am going to turn on some of our Source4 Ellipsoidals. And as you can see, this is kind of what they look like without a color turned on. Their focus to the walls here, which we used in our recent concert in May, as well as some nice focuses on stage. Obviously, they look a little weird because they're still focused to our Drama Club's Clusep from the fall production. And what's nice about these is you can quickly shift the colors of them without having to install a gel into them. So here we have red, yellow, green, green, blue, and magenta. Next up, we have the, also, we can use these to kind of create patterns. This is a school spirit pattern that we had prepared for our May concert. It's known as Q110 for the Laker Way. And then next up, we have our strip lights on stage. As you can see, they kind of create a nice wash for any performer who may be standing anywhere on stage. And they're just nice. You can't really see the edges of them. They kind of wash the stage. And we can use them to create a linear effect, which makes a nice dynamic pattern with the lights, which you can now see both on stage with our strip lights and our ellipsoidals doing on the walls. Next up, we have our moving lights, which I have pointed to these staircases. And these are very nice to kind of move anywhere in the auditorium. As you can see, I have them pointed here. And additionally, we can use built-in goggles into these, which create patterns on the lights, which look like this. And these are kind of good to create patterns and textures on the stage, and also they can be different colors, as you can see. And additionally, to kind of create energy through a live performance, we can use these moving lights to kind of move around the auditorium as well, as you can see here. And finally, to show all these kind of different aspects and functions of these lights working together to create kind of a setting, I have a cue from the Drama Club's June production of Frozen Kids, where we are trying to represent the blizzard that Elsa creates in Arendelle. And right here, as you can see, we're using our moving lights kind of to simulate that snowflake effect. Both on the walls, we have our ellipsoidals and our strip lights kind of creating this nice blue effect. And then some of our strip lights up here are kind of helping to make it so you can see the performers when they're on stage. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Tommy Catalani to demonstrate the digital acoustic system.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
It'll be easy, I promise. Are you controlling all this from an iPad? Or is that like a special...
It's basically an iPad, but it's special connected to our light board up in the balcony.
So for example, the fall play, how many people were doing the lights?
We had two people up in our light booth who were controlling it. But then in June, when we did Frozen Kids, we had four people because we had two of us working in the light booth to do the cues for this system, as well as follow spot operators.
Is everything done as the play is happening? Or some of it pre-programmed, so it happens automatically?
The cues are pre-recorded, such as some of those moving effects, but the cues have to be advanced to the dialogue of the play. So that's kind of what the operator does. They pay attention to what's happening on stage and where the performers are.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. My name is Tommy Catalani. I'll help you guys about the sort of more sound bridge in vein of the auditorium update. So with the etymology of Graham, we were able to install Yamaha Active Dual Control Horseshoe Audio System into the auditorium. And what that does is it takes the pre-existing acoustic properties of the auditorium and amplifies them. So how does this work? Microphones placed above the stage pick up sound from below. Then strategically spaced speaker project the sound and wrap it up. The same microphones then pick up, project the sound, and project it again, overlaying it in a way that maximizes...
Thanks. Overlaying it in a way that maximizes listener immersion. So...
I think we can hear it a little better.
Okay.
We can hear it.
Okay. So the entire time I have been speaking, the system has been off. I will now turn it on.
Okay, now it's off. So none of this sound, I don't think that you're hopefully hearing right now from the regular auditorium, is coming through the vector. It's all coming through the Yamaha Active Dual Control Horseshoe Audio System. So hopefully, there is a sizable difference there. I'm just going to turn it off now for dramatic effect. Now it's off. Now it's on. And now it's off. Okay.
So some practical applications of this. With this iPad, you can remotely control the amount that certain speakers project and reverberate sound. And this is useful because you can sort of simulate different acoustic environments depending on how you alter the amount that certain microphones project the sound. And so, yes, and for example, you could simulate the acoustic environment of a moderately sized room, or that of a concert hall, or that of a cathedral. And so, different acoustic environments suit different ensembles better. For example, a jazz band, which has a very brassy, bombastic sound, would benefit most from a different acoustic environment than, say, a string quartet. And you can also engage it to call... You can also engage it to call the voice lift, which effectively simulates the effect of a microphone. So say if you forgot, if you're on the stage speaking to a crowd of people and you either forgot a microphone or you don't want the imperative of using one, you can activate the voice lift to sort of simulate that effect. So as much as a reverberated PowerPoint presentation is, I'm sure, exactly what you want to hear, the real purpose of this is to amplify the performance. And so in order to demonstrate that, in a few moments, I'll be welcoming the Skinny Atlas Boys, on stage, to sing an excerpt from their piece.
Hi, I'm Ms. Williams. This is Mr. Franco, my student teacher, Ryan Lordoner, from the Grace School of Music. And he's working on it now, so he is going to conduct now. I think he's going to give you a little snippet of the end, and you're going to do some stuff. It's going to help you hear the difference, so relax.
And that was, they sang that as the auditorium simulated the acoustic environment of a small room. And so now I'm going to change that to a concert hall. And I will now change that to our larger setting, which is that of the acoustic environment of a cathedral. Yeah, so now I'll welcome them to sing the entire piece. And I'm going to be setting the system to the optimal setting for a choir. This is what you would hear during a concert, the choir was performing. And yeah. And that wraps up our presentation of the auditorium post update. So thank you so much for coming. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you guys so much for coming and coming on this morning.
Our pleasure.
Thanks for having us.
Incredible, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Franco.
Thank you. Very good.
That was awesome.
Incredible, Roy. Thank you.
Just slightly understandable, but whatever.
It's come a long way.
Okay, so now we are, item B, opportunity for public comment. The board encourages expression of public comment, or encourages public expression. At board meetings, speakers may comment on matters related to any agenda item. Board will not permit public sessions, discussions involving individual district personnel or students, persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. Speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Personal attacks, obscene language, libel statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial relapse or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Time allocated for public comment is 30 minutes with the option to extend by vote. There's a three- to five-minute allotment per speaker. We offer a comment period at the beginning of regular meetings and a second period at the end, but generally, we do not receive comments at special appointments. We ask any speaker to identify themselves by name and address prior to speaking. So if anybody would like to make public comments tonight, you may stand up and state your name and address before. Going once, or twice. Okay. I don't think we have anybody joining us tonight, so we will move on. Next item up is the approval of minutes from our November 1st meeting. Can I get a motion on that? Oh, I'm sorry. Approval of minutes, November 1st and 14th. I'm going to put those together. Okay, Barry first, Amanda second on that. All those in favor of approving the November 1 and November 14 meetings, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Both of those passed. Up next is the superintendent's report, so I am going to pass that on to Barry.
All right, thank you, Danielle. I'm going to actually use the laptop of the podium up there because it'll be projected for the rest of the audience. So give me one second. There are, part of my presentation is explaining some of the things that are going on with UPK. If anybody wants to take a look at some materials as I'm doing it, please figure it out.
Okay, while this loads, I'll start off, a couple of things tonight I wanted to share. Number one was just a reminder to everybody with all the illness that's going on right now, the amount of subs that we've had this week, the amount of colleagues that are out with RSV, the flu, who knows what. Please, just a reminder, if you're feeling sick, stay home. Wash your hands, stay away from people if you can. We're sort of limping towards the holidays now with the amount of people that are out. So take care of yourselves, drink lots of water, get some rest. We'll go from there. Moving on, I had some good news this week that I wanted to share. Some congratulations that were shared with me in correspondence. So I'll read them both. The first is from Town Supervisor Janet Aaron. And she said, Dear Eric, on behalf of the town board, we congratulate the Skinny Atlas Boys Soccer Team and their coach, Pete O'Connor, and the coaching staff for capturing the third consecutive New York State Public High School Athletic Association Class B championship title and their fourth title in program history. What was most impressive is their can-do attitude and working together as a team, something that they will carry with them for the rest of their lives. Their believe attitude and their commitment to never quitting was certainly evident throughout their season. We're so proud to have these young men represent Skinny Atlas. We enclose this certificate of recognition for the Boys Soccer Team, and wish them all continued success throughout their school career and into the future. We put the certificate into a nice frame that I'm going to hand deliver to Mr. O'Connor tomorrow. So just big congratulations to them. The second is a great thank you note that I received this week from our friend and partner JD Delmonico. And he said, Dear Eric, I wanted to take a moment and make you aware of something that you already know. The building and grounds crew for our district is absolutely amazing. I am the president of the Skinny Atlas Youth Football Club and also president of the Skinny Atlas Football Boosters. In this past fall, both organizations had numerous interactions with the building and grounds team. I have to say that our entire team went well above and beyond our expectations every time we needed them. Their reliability, thoughtfulness, and true passion for both the children and the facilities were beyond impressive. Elaine, Colleen, and the entire team are incredible assets to the district, and I wanted to be sure their hard work and dedication is recognized. It did not matter if it was late Friday night varsity football game or Sunday morning youth football game. The team showed up with great attitude and passion for what they do. As a local business owner, I recognize that those characteristics are more difficult than ever to find in people, and our building and grounds team is a shining example of excellence and thoughtfulness. Together, both organizations worked with and represented around 150 kids from our district, ranging from kindergarten to 12th grade. Every one of those kids greatly benefited from the hard work and dedication of the buildings and grounds team. We could not exist without such help and support from Elaine, Colleen, and the entire team. Thank you so much for what you do. Your team is a shining example of the character and hard work we are trying to instill in our children. Thank you for being fantastic. And I thought I saw a couple of our buildings and grounds crews here tonight. Colleen's hiding in the back here.
She's ducked out.
She went back out.
Oh, she missed it, so. I'll make sure she gets a copy of this tomorrow, but just a huge thank you. These people are amazing. And thanks to JD. These things all too often go unsaid. And you know, this sort of recognition for our teammates means more to people than they realize. So special thanks to him for taking the time out to write such a thoughtful note. And we look forward to a long, successful relationship working with that organization. Moving on, I was asked by the Board of Education to provide an update on our UPK program and distributed some information before we started. So if you have any questions along the way, please let me know. There's some materials, as I said, some of the instructional materials that are new to the program this year. But I just wanted to go through at a very high level some of the history behind the program. Back in 2021, 2022, the school aid runs were published by the governor. For the first time, the program was eligible to receive funding to cover expenses related to running full-day UPK. There was a lot of questions at that time about sustainability, how long the funding would run, when, if ever, it would dry up. And us, along with many districts in that first year, elected not to select those funds just until we learned whether or not that they would be sustainable. Coming the next year, those funds reappeared. And at that point, the district had a number of conversations throughout the year about a pilot UPK program. So it was a first-time injection of revenue for the school district. And then basically, the confusion that came out was, in the media, what was published was a certain funding amount. But the fine print was that we had $5,400 per student. So that $5,400 times our 14 students cost about, the funding came in at about... So that $5,400 times our 14 students cost about, the funding came in at about $75,600. I was asked by the board to present a breakdown of other expenses and to present what is the feasibility of these programs, programs like these continuing into the future. So based on what we know right now, included UPK enrollment of 14 students, $5,400, a lot of federal funds per student, total amount of $75,600, instructional salaries, including one teacher, one teaching assistant, and around $2,000 in professional development totaled $83,855, materials and supplies of $18,481, textbooks at $16,47, benefits at $32,091, for a grand total of $150,914 to run the UPK program. So less the $75,000 roughly that we received in federal funds, the ultimate cost to the taxpayers was in the neighborhood of $75,000. So at this point, we don't know what enrollment will be next year. We had a bumper crop of kindergarteners this year that came through more than we had expected. COVID threw a monkey wrench in the works for a lot of different things. What we expected to happen, how enrollments would play out, really turned into a guessing game, and we're no less, we're in no different situation this year as far as what enrollments will be, whether or not federal funds are guaranteed, and we're in a holding pattern until we see the aid runs that come out, I believe in January. Connor, did you want to jump in and add anything as far as details?
That's just perfect, yeah.
Great. So at this point, you know, the questions that are starting to come in to me are, are we going to run the program again? Are we going to expand the program? And if we did, how many kids could we support? And while I don't know the answers to a lot of those questions yet based on the inavailability of funding numbers from the state, I can't, I can't, I'm sorry, federal funds.
No, I'll just say one thing. We'll find out when the runs come in early in January if that funding will continue. So we will know before budget season, as we're in this process, so we'll find out.
Are you guys hearing any chatter? And I know it just been chatter that it is likely the funding is going to continue in some capacity or that it's going away thoroughly or around that?
We have a chatter of additional old jobs.
Okay.
My document's not going to load because that network discovery is off. Heather, any work?
You got to do this PC, not network. Is that okay?
Yes. So before I switch gears onto the strategic plan, just wanted to offer opportunities for any board members, anybody to ask any questions, and...
You can do it. You got it.
Got it. Thanks, Emily. Great, sorry about that. So in the absence of federal funds, it will cost taxpayers $150,000 to run UPK again next year. With federal funds, it came in at around $75,000, and that's barring any unforeseen expenses. We do have IEP costs and different types of things that, out of respect for student privacy, I won't get into in any sort of detail, but there are potential ancillary costs hidden within there. I think as a first pass of what we know right now, that $75,000 cost is a fairly accurate projection of what it will actually cost us out of pocket this year in addition to the federal funds that we received.
Some of the, so the professional development, material supplies, and textbooks, round about $35,000. Do you know what except that is reusable versus able to be used again?
I don't know to the dollar. I know as far as textbooks and things like that, those are reusable.
They are reusable.
Yes, and as we, as we, as we sort of evolve in how we instruct and what sort of materials and experiences we build for the kids, there might be some additions to that as well.
So we're looking at that for it helps. So if we had four to help out of pocket because we have some costs for the tax, right?
If, if the textbook cost is rebuilt?
Correct.
All things being equal to last, to last year and how the funds work, it could be around there. But again, I'm a little hesitant to say it's just $40,000 because I don't know what additional costs we would, we would experience as well. So I'd say, you know, worst case is that $75,000 or, or the whole $150-plus thousand if there's an absence of federal funds, and at that point, we'll have to have more conversations about the sustainability of the program. On the program itself, it's been fantastic. Mr. Brown and his team, Mr. Schmeling and Gere, Kelly Sears, Kathy Buck have really been building it while they fly it this year and have done an incredible job. Kids are super cute. You got to remember they're three and four-year-olds, so stamina is a real thing when you're three and four. Getting through a whole group instruction and sustaining and what we expect at the other elementary levels has definitely been a daily adjustment that people have had to make, but their hearts are in it, their souls are in it, and it's been a real treat to, to welcome those kids into our community. As far as instruction, you know, a lot of it has to do with trying to create experiences that are not just, you know, whole group instruction, you know, rigid type elementary or, or middle-level education experiences, but really instill the love of learning in kids. In talking to Brian Cohen today, he emphasized the thematic units that the kids experience that are fun, are engaging, science, math, reading are all sort of woven into these units. We use, we use a couple of different programs. Wit for Wisdom is our literacy program actually doesn't go down to UPK level, but there are some other complementary programs, things like foundations that have extended down into UPK. And really, beyond that, they're cute as a button, and we love having them in the school community. Any other questions or concerns or comments about UPK? Okay. At this point, what I'll do is I will move on into our strategic document. Okay, so this was the product of a year-long, a year-long journey in working with the community, gathering information and feedback, and I know a lot of you have heard a lot of this, but I just want to very quickly fly by some of the history. If you notice, we have it listed as a draft in our official document that we continually add and update to, and that's A, so we can keep track of the latest copy, and B, to really comment on the fact that this is an iterative, evolving process. And some of those discoveries and aha moments that we've had over the past several months, I'll highlight in a moment. So really, the introduction and the timeline had to do with the following calendar. So going back to February of 2022, gathered community feedback. We drafted a mission, vision, core value statement that was developed by the Board of Education and the leadership team. The community team assembled in June. The mission, vision, core values were reviewed. Priority areas were identified, and then strategies were suggested, and then all of that work was distilled down in July and August into action plans to specify what exactly would be done to meet the objectives of each priority area, and then throughout July and August, the leadership team met to review revisions and then really put down on paper who was going to do what and how this was going to look in the plan. So just to jump back in, I'm extremely proud of this work here that came out of our whole school community. The mission, vision, core values and the priority areas that were set are, I think, exemplary within the region, and the focus on relationships, connections, and learning that you hear us talk about all the time is really lived. It's not my words or our words. It's a community-wide, it's a community-wide piece of culture that really is what makes this place so special. So every Skinny Atlas Laker will have opportunities and support to develop strong relationships, form meaningful connections, and explore multiple pathways for lifelong learning. Our vision is that we will be a welcoming and inspiring place to learn, grow, work, and live, and our core values are highlighted as relationships, connections, and learning. Lakers respect and value other people. Lakers are connected in our community, our world, and in our learning. And then in homage to the last strategic plan, learning is for all of us all of the time. Going down to the priority areas that were developed by the community, and these are really what fuel our goals, and it broke it out into each of these four. Number one was learning opportunities. We'll foster high expectations, rigorous instruction, inclusive learning opportunities and student engagement. If you notice, the word inclusive is highlighted in green there, and that was one of our aha moments in that these things that were foundational in our learning opportunities, as we constantly review our goals and go back through the document, we really didn't do a good enough job of highlighting what it meant to be inclusive, and that is one of the main focuses of some of the professional development work our leadership team and our professional development in March is focused on is building that capacity for inclusive education within the school district. The excellence in human capital is the second focus area, to recruit, retain, and develop passionate leaders in education. A school is as good as the teachers that are put in front of students, and all the magic and all the important work happens in classrooms every day, and how we go about finding and retaining and developing these people has to be a thoughtful, deliberate process, not something that is incidental or, you know, you happen upon these people by luck. This is a special place to be, and we've put a lot of work in over the last several months to highlight what it actually means to be a Laker and what a special thing it is to be welcomed into our community. As far as community partnerships, we will foster positive relationships, communication, engagement with all stakeholders, and then lastly, in our environment, we'll create a safe and welcoming environment for all children to thrive emotionally and educationally with a sense of belonging to the Laker community. This is the most special and unique thing about this district is the connections that the adults have with children. One of the other aha moments is we talked about safety, and much of the conversation about safety last year focused on mental health, and it will continue in that focus, but what we did not do a really good enough job of highlighting in the plan was all of the work and all of the practice that goes into the physical security, the physical safety of students within the school district. So some of those things are highlighted as well. Now, I'm not going to read the entire plan to everybody. I just want to kind of highlight things from different areas. So in the first section here is learning opportunities. The primary function of a school district is, after all, teaching and learning. As we go, bear with me one second, sorry about that. As we go through, you'll see things highlighted in red, you'll see things highlighted in green. None of this work is done. The things that we have listed up there, this is an iterative process. These are things that we've identified, things that we have begun to work on, some of these things we've completed to build a structure on, but it's important to note that they're not done. They have to continue to happen every day, every month, every year. So that's a real sense of awareness in how we approach this. So under learning opportunities, we talked at first about some of the things that we had said that were important to us that really need work, and part of this process was the realization that some of these things need a longer runway than we had anticipated. This personal development plans came out of this IEDPs for all kind of concept, so it was basically every student deserves an individualized education plan. In researching models and looking for best practices, and this is a, this is a way, way bigger lift than I think everybody had anticipated. So it's a goal, but it's a longer-term goal. We talked about graduation plans, personal goals, career assessments. A lot of these things are starting to become in place. Under learning, under learning opportunities, we also very deliberately wanted to highlight inclusive schooling. Jen Whipple and Kristin Moses have taken a real leadership role in inclusive schooling and professional development, working with Syracuse University and some of the unbelievable people within our own region that lead this work, and some of this is highlighted here.
Would you like us to ask you questions at the end or as you are in each step?
Fire away.
Okay, so if you could scroll to the page where we said first under the learning opportunities, just a little page up forward, personal talent. Okay, so right there, the purpose of this is to foster student voice and finding what success looks like. What is important to you? How do we start asking our students that?
So I would say incidentally, yes. Systemically, no. This is something that an entire structure needs to be built around.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, let's just take at the high school level, for example, because some of this is more, you know, as they're closer to graduation. What has prevented us in the September, October, November, and now we are starting December, four months of school from our guidance counselors, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody.
At the high school, this has happened.
So we, our guidance counselors have asked every one of their students, because I would assume, maybe I'm wrong, and that's a different problem, said every one of our guidance counselors has met with every one of their students at least once, so far it's felt, right?
Greg and Mike are here to chime in on any of this.
So can we safely say that our guidance counselors have asked every student in this high school, because I'm sure they've seen them all once, because there's only 400 kids here, what does success look like to you? It's one sentence. It requires, some kids it's 10 paragraphs, some kids it's one sentence. And if they have not, why have they not asked out one question? And I want to know why they haven't asked it if they have. Is it time? Is it capacity? Is it lack of awareness? Lack of, lack of, I don't want to say lack of caring, I might come out wrong, but they don't think it's important? I want the answer to that question. That is, to me, and I could be oversimplifying, that's a very simple thing. What is important to you? Is it important for you to graduate in, what is it going to be, four or five months away from graduation? Is it important to you to apply to a college or to have a game plan or to just pass your math class? I mean, we're not asking them to tell us their whole world philosophy.
Correct.
But I think it's very important for us to know the answer to that question, because if the kid's answer is, it is important for me to get at least a C in all of my classes, jeez, that's some really great marching orders for all of us and all of the people that are supporting this particular student to be able to run with for, for the next five months or six months leading up to graduation. And if we haven't asked that yet, and we wait till April 30th to say, hey, buddy, what's important to you? Passing all your classes? Crap, you got four weeks. And sorry, you just missed the, the spring break bootcamp to make up some credit, so I wish I had known that back in September when I should have asked you the question. So I'm not trying to pick on anyone. Maybe that has happened, and that would be amazing, but that's a really simple question that could potentially have a really simple answer. And so I want to know, how many kids have asked that question, been asked that question, and how many of them have answered it? And maybe some of them say, I don't know what answers, but I, I want to know the answer to that question.
So.
So every student has met with their counselor, every high school student, whether it was the last four months or last year in preparation for their graduation plan. So every student has been asked what their goals are, where would they like to see themselves, and we meet with kids too when they, we look at all the time, looking at grade reports to see where kids are at in terms of their progress. We'll bring them in and talk to them individually about how they're doing, how we can help and support them. So those questions, maybe not in the last four months, but every high school student has had that question asked in preparation for their graduation plan and their long-term, long-term goals.
Okay, and that, and that's fair. I mean, I'm not trying to like imply that you're not doing it, but we have it on the strategic plan for a reason, that we pulled in community members, that we all spent a raging Friday night in the cafeteria doing all this work, right? So part of this is an accountability list for, for all of us, for the board, for the administration, for the teachers, for everybody. And so I'm just asking, are we doing that and are we getting answers?
Yeah, and what I think is, we do, most school districts do a better job of this as kids approach the finish line, and what we've recognized is a need to move this whole process down so that kids are more thoughtfully choosing what courses, made more aware of what sort of experiences are available to them as they progress through their whole education period.
Well, and part of the thing that came out of that cafeteria in the community, this question isn't necessarily related to graduation or career, right? Because it could have been for some kids, as we talk about social, emotional, we are aware of, have been in any primary school district that came out on the news this week, what's important to you could be, I want to try out for a play or for a team or join something, so it's not necessarily So it's not necessarily related to graduation, it's related to their life as a whole.
Connectedness.
Yeah, and their life as a whole. So I just want to make sure that if we're putting this on here, and we're all saying we're making behind it, we're actually getting behind it.
But then I think likewise, we're identifying a hole here and that some kids haven't been met with yet this year. And like the landscape for a 16, 17-year-old can change drastically over the course of six months.
Yeah, it's not necessarily true, and I'm not going to say that every child has been met with this year. And I know that our counselors are meeting with kids all the time. But then brought this to the question in terms of building a plan and knowing what kids' interests were, are you interested in, where would you like to see yourself? You know, those questions are asked in multiple different ways too. You know, counselors go into classrooms and they'll talk to kids about courses they're interested in. And when, you know, if you're trying to think about, you know, where you'd like to be, try to take electives that maybe match your interests. I mean, so that question is general, depending on who's meeting with every child, to develop actually the schedule for the child and working with families. And then there's just regular interactions with kids all the time. We have a bind, a binders is another piece that's been mentioned with regard to, you know, the family from Mr. Moses and working on, you know, the social, emotional wellbeing of our students. So those are spots too, where we all identify students who maybe, you know, respond to that diagnostic assessment of their social, emotional health in a way that requires us to be around. So there's a variety of different ways that we go about trying to ensure that every student is being, you know, the needs of, their needs are being met in some way. I mean, visibility, just part of visibility. There's, we're out front, we're up in the commons, we're in the cafeteria, we're in and out of classrooms. We're, you know, fist bumping, glad handing, all our teachers, our staff, everybody's talking to kids. How are you? Nice to see you. I think you can tell that in the culture, especially when you come in and students walk out of classrooms saying thank you to their teachers. Thank you, thank you. I mean, it's a very, it's a very communal, family environment. Not every student loves school. So even with all of what we're doing, and there's always room for improvement here, that's for sure. And anything we do, we're always looking for ways to enhance that. But I really feel confident in our teachers, in our support staff, everybody. Custodians, bus drivers, the whole unit, that we are all watching kids, looking at them. We're, you know, regularly, the council will reach out and say, yeah, I don't think so-and-so looked okay today. Maybe you can touch base with them. Share a story, just today, we had a student walk in and a parent got out of their car to talk to our resource officer, you know, they're concerned about their child. So within minutes, we had the teacher, staff checking in on that child, making sure that they're okay. And that happens all the time, all the time. So I feel really good about what we're doing. Is there rooms, areas, does everyone get everything that they need all the time, every day? I can't say that, of course, you know. But I really feel comfortable and confident in our team and our staff. And not just, I'm not just speaking of a high school. I obviously had some experience in other buildings. And I just, and I know, and we know that K-12, we've set a wonderful place. Areas we can do better, absolutely. And so, you know, continue to try to enhance that.
And I want to pause. I'm not trying to like come in super hot and say you're not doing it, but I'm just trying to make sure we're all keeping ourselves in check, not being like, yeah, we do it.
No, absolutely not.
And I think previous to the plan of that specific question, we always try to have a collective effort, this is not the counseling thing, because it does start when the students come off the bus into that building. It could be a custodian group, it could be the school nurse, it could be administrative assistants, always trying to build that relationship with our students. They're the ones on the front line that report to the council most of the time that, here's them here in the hallways, here's them here in the classroom, the go-to administration, so on and so forth. Now with the plan and that very specific question, now we have a more of a target. So yes, now we can actually raise that very specific question to everybody. But we always try, and Mike put it very well, it's just not about the counseling department, it's the whole culture.
That sense of urgency that I hear, Danielle, believe me, we all feel it. I mean, you saw my email today. Tim responded and said the best is, you know, nothing is more important. There's not a single thing that we do that is more important than making sure these kids feel safe, connected, and you don't make a decision like what we saw at our neighboring district.
For a moment though, I'm going to pause on that. Because I'm of the opinion, we're going down a different path than what this priority area is looking at.
We're talking about environment.
Right now, in our conversation, we're talking about relationships, we're talking about connections. This is learning opportunities, rigorous instruction, individualized graduation plan.
Yep.
So when we talk about meeting with what is important for you, defining success in the individual graduation plan, that is a bit more academically focused than making sure that kids are getting fist bumps, feeling welcomed, feeling cared about.
That's more of a priority four, the environment piece.
Right, so we need to go back and down a bit on that. How far away are we once you extend the runway? What is that looking like? I'd like to dive in more on how far away do you think we are about the individual priority area?
I think these things organically tend to grow at the high school first because of the prevalence of the finish line. So we're looking at models, we're looking at examples of where this is being done really well. Orchard of a graduate type programs, things like that. To identify how it looks what's done really, really well before we roll four different things out in four different buildings trying to sort of complete this goal. The, a lot of what is threaded through here is this desire to make this place this four great buildings, this one great district, to weave it all together so everything is complementary from Watermane to State Street to the middle schools and the high school. And that's not an overnight process. And I think you really have to focus on getting it right from a outcomes and academic standpoint at the high school first, and then it will translate down.
So you didn't give me a target date. I think what I heard a lot there is this is a really big fight to take on. So we're not going to take on the small peaks, which is the high school. We're not taking on, let's make it a goal that every junior by, you know, this June has developed a personal plan. Or every sophomore, or, I mean, I'm just throwing out grade levels ideas. Maybe you start with the eighth graders and roll that up from there. But I want to make sure that we're not kicking this down the road because it feels too harsh to take on. And we could be doing something now.
Right, and the idea isn't to kick it down the road. It was just to take a realistic look at, you know, when this was put on as a priority in a summer meeting, or this is distilled out into a goal for the 22, 23 school year to get an entire district on board in 22, 23, is pretty ambitious.
But can we get a grade level on board?
Sure.
Can we, can?
And that's what I'm getting at, it might be that smaller realistic.
In the spring, I'd say we have met with every, this is already happening, and I'm just not, you know, as a work, we're not at that grand old level, but we have met with every student, the eleventh grader, the 10th grader, to talk about at their, where, meeting where they're at at that time. What do you think your plans are for the next years? Because if there's a kid in 10th grade that says, I think I actually want to go into this particular field, then we're starting a, a, a policy, or these extra classes, or whatever it is, or get their individualized learning plan. I just want to graduate with these solid enough, because I feel like that's struggling me. That's their individualized learning plan. So how are we setting them up over the summer or in their schedule for the next year? And maybe some of that is happening in the, sorry, I'm trying to, but anyways.
Yeah, so that's happening, and you're also hitting on something critical that was another aha moment for us was this sort of realization that we need to make everybody very much aware of the offerings that are offered at our local BOSEs. Those other career fields that maybe always didn't get the emphasis from our district that they should. And really making sure that the parents, the kids, the teachers are all aware of that. And there's been a lot of progress already in how we do that. BOSEs is a stigmatized service in school districts, and it should not be. There are incredible, incredible opportunities for our kids, Skinny Atlas kids, kids throughout the region. And it has been an underutilized service here for a long, long time. I've had many conversations with Catherine Carlson about this and just how long it's been where Skinny Atlas students underutilize these services.
Eric, I have a question.
Sure.
I'll be direct. Junior year, kids that used to sit down and literally write a plan from their junior through their senior year, and how they're going to get to the end, is that not the F E D?
That's it.
That's it.
That's, that's.
So your exact thing that you're saying is happening. I guess that's what I'm trying, that's why I'm sort of confused, and I don't hear anything coming back. So I wanted, you said you had to get dressed and change your fence.
It's happening, it's been happening, and it's happening before that too. It's absurd, as I mentioned, when Danielle asked the question. All, every student has been met with with their counselor and developing a plan and creating their schedule for, say, for my trade or something. That's, it's happened. So I think the piece that's on here, right, that's, that was sort of an easy part for us to put on, because it's happened. The part was maybe personal development plans to the kindergarten or Watermane and State Street. Or in middle school, maybe a little more special. But at the high school, wow, I mean, you're developing your schedule from one year to the next. You're talking about where are you headed? And then you're looking at how did it go last year? If you struggled in, you know, geometry, then you're not going to honors. You know, and these are, these are conversations that counselors are having with the child. Maybe science isn't your thing, you know? Maybe we should be some kind of, you know, go more of a humanities track. So those conversations happen through the scheduling process every year as they go through. So that's why we, that part was on there like that. Some of the other pieces, I think our understanding was that that sort of came out of like developing a personal plan earlier. And so in maybe middle school, State Street, Watermane, is where we need to build more of that.
And again, like I started, none of this is done. This is iterative, this is a work in progress. This is always something that we're looking to improve upon. Some of the highlights that I included were those things, not the ones, check that box, we're done, but the things that are heavy lifts, the things like inclusivity and professional development around inclusivity and what that looks like in Skinny Atlas, our RTI and TSS plans that have been evolving. The way we identify kids for interventions, the services that we provide, the individualization of those services. We, as we get better and better and better at these things, they get more and more specialized. So that's what we're trying to highlight in this, is that these are the things that we acknowledge that we're working on. Another one, and Mr. Cohen's out in the audience right now, is computer science to round up learning opportunities. Computer science is a state mandate that's coming down, and it's also, I would say, critical within our region with some of the exciting economic developments that are happening and some of the additional science and technology opportunities that we can inject into our kids. So you'll see those things in there.
Susan, Eric.
Yeah.
Before you move on, could you go back to that one we brought up earlier? Where you put some of that on the back?
Yep.
Okay, so my takeaway is that, you know, even as a education institution, we've been doing these plans over the years. It's been, Tim, today is a continuous to today. That's just part of evaluating where we're at when we want to be. I guess from a strategic standpoint, one question would be, how effective is what we have been doing and we continue to do? How do we gauge how effective that is? And where do we have opportunities to enhance it? So that we do need to inject it all, and, you know? That would be the interest of our level, seeing that we are doing something. And we know it, we'll have kids who've been through it, right? So the question is, how effective is what we've been doing? And do we have options to improve? Have we done that assessment, or we're simply doing what we've been doing?
So I think we're always looking at how effective these things are. We sort of crossed in between learning and priority area four of environment. That has evolved greatly when we start talking about the, how do you feel? How is the school experience? Who are you connected to? What are you involved in? We've had enormous growth in that area. When you start looking at the effectiveness of some of these other things, in high schools especially, they're important to look at, but they're a hard look in the mirror. And there are some things prevalent within high-performing schools throughout the region that are alarming, that we talk about a lot, such as where do our kids go to school when they leave? And do they stay? And what are all the reasons and the details, the individual circumstances behind those stories that kids, by and large, do not stay at the colleges that they go to out of school? They do not endure, they do not necessarily graduate in four years. This is not just a Skinny Atlas phenomenon. This is Pittsburgh Bendon, you know, anybody who's been a high school principal has been on this for a decade or more. High-performing schools have high first-year attrition rates. And those are the types of things that we're starting to look at to better understand why, so that we can come back to our kids and maybe do a better job of guiding them throughout the process or help our parents navigate it in a way where they're, you know, encouraging their kids to go to the right places versus some of the reasons and decisions behind where they end up going.
How do you get that data?
So there's the National Clearinghouse, which will give us all of that data. The problem is, it's only as good as the schools that participate in the National Clearinghouse. So a lot of the private school data is not shared, a lot of it is not good, and that is why it is not shared. The most successful campaigns I've seen are grassroots. Get people in a room, smile and dial, where'd you go to school? Did you stay at that school? Did you graduate in four years? What are you doing now? That kind of stuff. But at the high school level, they do a lot of these things, I know. Having seniors come back to talk to our kids and, you know, explaining, you know, the freshman experience, the reasons that they made some of their decisions before our kids are necessarily making those. So they're not hearing it just from all the old crusty adults in the room, they're hearing it from the kids themselves. But again, you know, I don't think anybody has a really strong grasp on how to solve this problem. But we've identified it as a problem, and it's something that we want to continue to look at and work on.
And that's the thing, from a strategic standpoint, that's where we're interested in that. Are we doing something to how effective, how effective that is? And what are the product actions we can take? How long do we, we're very well at most of the problems.
Yeah. I think what we've got to be really careful about too is what measures and data we use to determine effectiveness. You know, if you look at the Fayetteville Aliases, the Casanova Is, the Skinny Analysts, the Whitehead, West Hills, the J Es, the Pittsburgh Bendons, the Victors, the high-performing schools in the region, some of the measures that they use of success is what kind of colleges their kids get into, what kind of Ivy League schools their kids get into. You know, what are their SAT scores, what's their graduation rate? And I think some of those very things are the things that are hurting our kids. Those are, those are the culture killers in school districts that you can't always put your finger on where it comes from. I ask my daughter, is it the school? And she'll say, no. I'll say, is it us, her parents? And she'll say, no. You know, for her, she identified sort of this competitive nature of her friend group, where everybody's expected to get into this school or that school. And they can't even tell you why. And that's this culture stuff that we're really interested in digging out to talk to these kids about. How do you make a decision that's good for you, not just something that's going to be super impressive, you know, when you leave high school? Impressive to whom, I think, is one of the big things. And a lot of that is the soft skills that, to Amanda's point, is under environment, safe environment versus just learning goals.
So to bring you back to this strategic plan, what it does under. Do you think the next time we get an update on the strategic plan, will we, next quarter, next couple of months? We could have an idea of just, or you could present to us some ideas that you guys plan to implement this personal development plan. So in the State Street building, here's kind of what we're going to do. We're going to ask a kid, reading his school year. Buddy, what do you want to work on? Reading math, or whatever, I don't know. And obviously, that scales up as like things more complicated, but will you, the administrative team, be able to give the board kind of some, some plans that you're going to try? Maybe they're going to be awesome, maybe they're not. But we got to start somewhere and start trying them.
Yeah.
So that we can say, but we're definitely implementing the V I C all, right?
Yeah, we're going to continue. Yeah, we're gonna continue to capture these things as we're doing them. And then, you know, if they flop, if they're a total failure, we'll tell you, hey, we tried this, didn't work.
But is it realistic that at the next update, there'll be some kind of framework on how we're going to implement this item of the strategic plan?
So some of that is, some of that is listed here, like our, our cursory goals. Some of these are the things that might highlight it that we're already doing. If you go down to other areas, you can kind of see, you know, Bosse's was at our open house. We're, we're highlighting these programs, not using them as a place to throw kids over the wall that are not necessarily traditional learning kits. Highlighting C T E students with P R. We've had, we've had them at board meetings to celebrate our C T E students as well. Like, these are the things that I think we're trying to highlight this, what we're doing. And they're not done. And they're not necessarily the only thing, but this list will get longer and longer and longer of all of the things that are attached to these goals. A lot of the professional development about like inclusive schooling, we put the detail right there. So you can see that we have our first kickoff meeting is tomorrow, right, Jeff? So professional development, here's the dates with the S U professors that we've identified. So a lot of that stuff is in here. And what I'll do is I'll, prior to the next one as well, this is always, it's always on our website. But I'll give you guys the updated list so that you can look at it, digest it, ask questions. And if there's anything specific that you're looking for, I'll know and I can highlight that when we present. The literacy pathway, obviously Francine has presented a number of times and all the work that's, that's going on there. That's ongoing. That will continue. K three, the line literacy instruction, huge, incredible, multi-year heavy lift. And our teachers are doing it. And it's amazing. We talked a little bit about the pilot U P K program. And again, you know, what's gonna happen next there? Down into priority area two, excellence in human capital. A lot of this has to do with process, procedure, recruiting, how to make sure we're getting the right people in the district, developing those right people. You know, selling our district as a destination, not just the old post and pray method of hiring people. We put a, we put an ad in the paper, here's, two people showed up, we hired one of them. Thirty years later, they retired. That's not good enough. And there's been a tremendous amount of thought and work in all of this. Even with retirees, exit interviews, resignations, the, the little tidbits that we've gleaned from these conversations with people were just lost forever because there was no process procedure. It was just sort of incidental, building by building. The new staff, you saw our recruiting videos, highlighting those new staff, how we're observing not just our new staff, our new staff, but our teachers, the administrative team calibrating what is instructual that we value, and then making sure we roll that out into the observations for all the faculty within the building. Going down into community partnerships. Again, a lot of it had to do with this idea of bursting the bubble. How do you get Skinny Atlas kids out of the bubble, out into the community, out into the real world? Attending programs, awareness of programs. Again, the Bosse's was highlighted. And then lastly, under, under environment, we talked a lot about ongoing professional learning, sense of belonging for all stakeholders, define and create a Laker culture. How do we communicate our mission, business staff and have their voice heard? Constant iterative review of the social experiences that are offered to kids. How do we make sure there's something here for everybody? How does every kid connect to something? Everybody needs somebody. Everybody needs something. And that can't be an incidental, just assumed process. It has to be specific and measured. And then the big, the, the last one, too, had to do with staff wellness and school security and safety. So those goals are on there as well. I'll email all of you guys a copy of this after the board meeting so you can look through it and ask any other questions. And then the future here. The accountability and implementation plan, we're at the December meeting, December two thousand and twenty-two, blueprint update, updates. This was basically the highlight reel. This is the things that we're working on. These are the important things. Next one, we're planning for March and then June. And in July, you go back to the blueprint planning day where you involve the larger community to kind of look at the, the scope of work that was accomplished, re-prioritize, set our goals for the next year and, and basically repeat the process.
So at the March meeting, at that point, we will be far in this school year. Do you think you will be able to be at a point, and there's no wrong answer to this, but to say to the board, okay, these six items, whatever they are, that were supposed to be done in March, June, and three, we did them, great. That's established. These other three, we, there's no way you're getting them this year. And here's the reason why. We don't see fulfilling anything this school year because it was bigger than we thought it would be.
Sure. Not, not like that, but the Yeah, but I, I think there's gotta be an awareness, too, that a lot of these things will always be on there.
Right.
Because we're, we're trying to hone them and improve upon them.
But there were some that, and I don't remember our reasoning, thinking that some of them would be a one-year problem that would be checked off. But if there are things you just could not finish in this school year, if you just highlight those and why they're taken away, which is not a bad thing, but
Sure.
You know, if we expanded, we, it's more complicated, it takes four hours, something.
Yep. So, so some of it's people problems, some of it's bandwidth problems, unforeseen strains on
Whatever it is, if you could just highlight this to us in large so we are aware in advance, not in the
Yeah. So tomorrow, I'll send all of you guys this exact thing. And then if you want to take all of January and February to ask questions, I'll have answers to any of those questions specific. We just need enough leave time that our team can get together and make sure we gather this for you.
Can we talk about a sense of belonging, finding something you're interested in, like we, Danielle's brought up several times. Having, we had this council go through all of the high school kids and look at are there any of them that are not involved in any clubs, any sport, anything, and then having a conversation with them. Maybe they work after school, they, I mean, other things, but having a conversation with anything that's like, I think, of, 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 of.
Yeah.
And hopefully you can put it all in work and find out.
Yep. Mike and Greg, you wanna jump on that one?
As far as the council meeting with our child.
I, I, I think it's, it's beyond just the counselors, too. I think our teachers know our kids incredibly well and are also the people that will identify, hey.
But this came up when we were doing the budget last spring and we had that list of, you know, we have nine hundred and fifty-seven sports teams and seven hundred different musical ensembles in four thousand clubs, you know, whatever the numbers are. And it was like, wow, we offer so much for such a variety, from the Pokemon club to, you know, a million different singing ensembles that are amazing, to all these activities. So in all of that, my whole point at that point was, it's almost like there's something for everyone. So if there is a group of kids, and hopefully it's a small group of kids, that in their entire four years in this high school never found one thing that spoke to them, let's go to those kids and say why. And, and maybe it is because they have a life outside of school that doesn't allow them the free time to join a club. And that's fine. But if they say, because I never felt like I belonged, or I was never asked, or I never thought I'd be welcomed, it just seems like one more opportunity for us to kind of like put that net out and be like, well, let's fix that.
What can we learn from the guy?
Yeah, like, hey, we just started a math club. Maybe that's your jam. You know, let's, so that, this was a, this came up when we had one of those really nice slide shows with all the things we offered. And it was just kind of alarming and awesome that we have so much and such a variety of interests that we would hope that every one of our students could find at least one thing that they can connect to and relate to. And if they can't, let's figure out why, because maybe it's a really simple fix. Or it's as simple as us saying, oh, you didn't know we had that? You should try it.
We, we did that process as a, as a faculty and staff last year where we basically went through every single roster by school and identified the kids that had many connections, the kids that maybe didn't have as many connections. We did the, you know, five visits for five minutes, you know, those five by five kind of things. There was a, a number of different versions of these things that happened throughout the schools. But we do them again, and again, and again, and again, to make sure that we're not missing anybody.
Yeah, I mean, maybe there, I just don't want us to, I hate for someone to fault it to cracks. If there's something that we can connect them to, then I can help them.
I had a text, Eric, this week the high school didn't buy this, and I was sneezing, and then like some names came up, and I'm like, oh, yeah, right, you know, this must be a mistake. They were our worst loss, you know? So you can never, you know, take it for granted that
You never know.
Someone is on your radar, you know, this kid is, you know, not a slice of your life, but you're great.
Well, the, the biomass captures this kind of really simple, magical thing of, if you're wondering how the kids are doing, ask the kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll tell you, you know.
So just like an exit interview or something, a survey or something.
You know, you, you, you talk to adults, and I don't know how many people have a really fond memory of their high school experience. And I am desperately interested in changing that. I want our kids to look back on this positively, to know that their teachers loved them and cared for them. I care more about that than their region's scores or their S A T scores. And I know that's kind of a radical thing to say publicly. But it's the truth. And I think our entire team to the person believes that same thing. And that's, that's a rare opportunity. But just like that email that I sent today, it is, it is our greatest fear that one kid any day doesn't feel like they, they have a connection to an adult, or a person, or a club, or a sport, or an activity, or something that they feel like that they're safe and they belong in. And if that's the, the focus of our work for the next five years here, I'll, I'll call that a win. Any other questions? Okay, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Connor. Can you all, Connor?
Yeah.
Connor, my friend, you are next with the business manager's reports.
No, just, just a poll. Yep, thank you. So just my only topic today is how to discuss the previous meetings, not we're always planning for the future, for future budgets, but we haven't had the conversation as early as we had what we're having now openly with the board. So we're about five months into the year. Just wanted to go through the three-part budget, and just defined by New York State is down to the program, which is highly instructional expenses, capital, which has facilities and operations, and then the administrative, administrative part of the budget, which is individuals who oversee as well as the operational expenses associated with that. So I wanted to go through before we got our, to know whether to build our budget as we know that our expenses and then see if we can afford it, obviously. If not, we scale back. So having this conversation openly and early is, is better than waiting for this the numbers to come out before we even start the conversation. So first I wanted to just break down these, as we're five months into the year, wanting to break down what we either have or have not had budgeted throughout the year, what's changed. And those conversations that are either federally funded, where funds are falling off, that might have to be built into the budget, or new things that we've added throughout the course of the year, we'll have to have those conversations to say, for example, U P K, if we want to continue U P K, it's gonna cost X amount. We know the expense, we'll see what revenue comes in, what's the final cost, what's the delta? So having these conversations earlier gives us a better sense of where we are and where we want to be. So this bulletin is on Board Docs, in case anybody wants to go see. I've also provided it to the board and I'll just go through entirely these three various areas of what has happened throughout the year. Some of the things that aren't mentioned here are those things like inflation, that is going up and down as we go through the year, moving up. And that will have an effect on budgets, fuel costs, materials and supplies costs, that will obviously have an impact. But these are the more sensitive items that we have a conversation about, that we have a decision to make rather than things that are on our end. So in the program part of the budget, one of the biggest part of the program budget and a part of the district's expenses, our salaries cut and dry. So for the teacher's contract, this was to expire at the end of this year. Last year, we extended this another year as an M O A, a memorandum of agreement, to continue that with a four percent increase. So we already know the increase of our biggest expense for next year. So that is four percent for our teacher's salaries. What we've added this year, we've added a middle, point six middle school reading teacher. That's kind of the onslaught of COVID, that we just found out there are some reading delays. We're not the middle school level or elementary level, so we hired a point six middle school reading teacher to support those needs. Currently, those are supported by federal funding. We can extend that another year. But if we want to fully fill that into the budget now, use those point six, whatever that expense was, for other things for federal funds for next year, we can do that. On the agenda tonight, we'll see an additional E N L teacher. About three or four years ago, our E N L population was under ten. We're approaching, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, around thirty.
Twenty-eight right now.
So we're approaching thirty. So that has expanded draft, so. On this agenda tonight, we'll see an appointment for an additional E N L teacher to support those needs. They will be supported by federal funds. And then we'll have that conversation to build it in for, support those with federal funds for another year. Or just put it in the budget and use that for something else.
We do those hires. Do we let people know that it's federal funding and that, I mean, we need to see some legal job to come here?
We do. We're always very transparent, honest about it. But, you know, for, for the E N L, the conversation that was had with our new hires as well, was the, the trend of increased students year over year over year. Definitely some jobs here that, if, if that were the other way, or if we fluctuated plus or minus, and like some school districts do, you have to be honest with people so that they know what they're getting into.
Next couple of things you, as you've seen on the board agenda, we've already had some resignation for some teachers. We've been proactively trying to recruit. Some of the director of operations and personnel is having a career fair, two career fairs over the next two days, two weeks, to be proactively recruiting. Greg, Greg, can you come around? We already have twenty-one people that are coming in to interview. Do you see their potential positions or are the positions either to get on our radar, positive work here moving forward? So we're trying to get out in front of the ball and get those names for other people to go manage. So Greg's doing a great job of being proactive with that. The two resignations, we have a chemistry teacher, Carl Morris, and a elementary reading teacher, that's, so those are definitely two things we're gonna have to go. We already have some, that will get transferred to those positions.
You'll start to see a lot more posts in anticipation of, because that's proactive recruiting efforts. We're not waiting for final answers. We're building a pool of candidates that are interested in working here than whether or not those things happen. Just another example of proactive recruiting and making sure we're getting the best people, not just the people who happen to see our ad or happen to be available. So kudos Greg for that.
And obviously with those senior teacher retiring, we'll see some sort of salary brackets. There will be some savings there. We're doing illicit people. There'll be a linear, that'll come out of this as well. Additional land technician in technical, technology department. Obviously, over the past three, four, or five years, the technology industry has just bloomed in school districts. In support, Heather and her team used to monitor three hundred devices. Now we're up to two thousand plus devices. So it's definitely a bigger, a bigger piece than it used to be. So that is currently supported by federal funds. That will not a doubt be recommended to be fully funded and in general fund moving forward. So as school year goes on, teachers have the ability to give a thoroughly letter of retirement to us to be in line for the sixth day pay up. That day deadline is January third and first of two thousand and twenty-three, uh, thirty-first, I said, first. So we'll have a better idea of any other positions we might have to fill. Um, so we'll have a better idea of any other, um, positions we might have to fill with those twenty-one elements, but I already have possible fills, so. Um, definitely great to be proactive with that. Um, a large expansion of our student support services section of the budget, so Chris and Moses, as we hired, um, previously in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, um, as the coordinator of student support services at family engagement. We've had this conversation multiple times, that we created a position that would be fully funded by federal funds. In the budget discussion last year, um, the board was in full support of at least partially funding that position to fully fund that position as we move forward. For that, we talked about, that's in the Paris address, it's a high need, it's a definitely, um, a great position for sure. Um, some of the things that Mr. Moses is working on, um, include helio health, trauma zones, the BIMAS two, access, same here, Lexi Keys, which is a translational service for ENL students, um, that we've used, um, and other stuff like that, um, for student support services. Um, there has been an increase in students' special education needs throughout the year. Um, this was Whipple does a fabulous job of taking care of all these IEPs, five oh fours, um, making sure our students get what they need. But there is an increase, we've seen, um, additional IEPs throughout the year, um, that's just uncovering what might be a bigger problem, but we are trying to solve this.
The five oh four meetings do, I think, had over eighty-five, eighty-eight, five oh four meetings already this year.
And just to get a sense, like, what would typically be normal? Like, an average?
Are you saying IEPs and five oh fours both increased, like, year over year over year?
Um, five oh fours definitely are on the increase, I think, I don't know, probably three years ago, I think we had fifty, now we're probably at least at eighty-five.
Did you say fifty or fifty?
Five zero.
Okay, five zero, thank you, I'm like fifty, okay.
So, IEPs, you know, fluctuates. We had some students move in, um, we had several students move in with IEPs this year, some of them with, with pretty intensive needs. I'm not sure we've had a, a huge increase in new referrals, like, it's pretty consistent in terms of what we're looking at for referrals, but we did have more students move in this year than we have in past.
So with that, as we've discussed in budget, conversations always are contingencies built into the special education department for that reason. Um, there could be hot, down, down the valley students coming in, um, we do have a rule to support that. If it hits that ceiling, you can do that a little bit higher, so, um, we're going to keep a good eye on that, we're always talking to Jen on that. Additional services for Bosse's, um, one of the big things that we've done, that have done a great job is utilizing, uh, T-10 valuables as a lot of our software and hardware purchases. Um, not only do you get administrative, um, costs associated with that, the initial, um, expense, but we do get a kickback the following year, uh, that offsets that cost number whether you're coming in or out, so. Um, Heather's done a great job of looking at those, seeing what we have, breaking that down and consolidating them again. It's increasing, and, like I said, um, with inflation, some of these things, we've seen five to twenty percent increases on some, um, some costs. Um, just for an example, today I had a meeting with New York Bus Sales, um, about our, they're going to be places for next year, thirty percent. So that's going from the regular seventy-one capacity bus, was about a hundred and twenty of them last, last year, almost a hundred and sixty this year. So costs are up, everybody knows that, but it's something that
Are we getting more for trade-in?
Yes.
What do we get?
Not thirty percent.
That goes up as well, like.
Not, not adjusted scale, yes, but since I'm shocked by the super price, our authorization last year for buses was five hundred, one thousand, we're looking towards six hundred. So, it's taking expenses, um, across the board. Next, shifting on software, like I mentioned, uh, the last thing, kind of instructional wise, is the UPK conversation that we had. I met you over to, uh, Watermelon, everyone's supply, and it's just, it is great seeing them, they teach us a great job, um, it's great to have them, so. Um, obviously, there's the cost of taxpayers, so that will be open conversations on the board moving forward. And like I said, in a month, we will see full revenue, we get to offset that. Um, for the capital part of the budget, uh, you'll see here a lot of transportation expense increases. Fuel is somewhat leveled out, uh, you'll see a bounce up and down, but, um, a couple of years ago, it's, you know, sixty percent, there's something like that, I think, so. As we make these athletic trips, trips, other field trips, uh, we do a lot of runs to, um, in support of ENL students, or do individual ones for them, just to make sure that they are involved, that they are, do have the opportunity, as every other student does, obviously comes with a cost, so. Paying for the driver, for, for a student with our contract, but, um, additional gas expenses, driver expenses, um, and obviously buses, that's not, so.
I'm sorry, I haven't dived too much into the details, but, um, could we expect some sort of largesse or increase in time for buses?
Um, so we ordered our buses around last time last year, and we are just about to receive our first one, and, so we expect to receive them back this summer, so.
So we can expect to move forward then, you know, on the panel.
Yeah, we were one of our first meetings of the year, the chairman said, well, this, this year's a pretty easy trade-in, there's no wheelchair buses, there's no storage capacity for these buses. It's four seventy buses in, four seventy buses out, um, so I told them to get the lottery time ready, um, and then we, we'll be pissed around the line, so. Can we expect it in the summer? Hopefully.
It needs to be like front of the line.
Yes. And now on to the administrative part of the contract, uh, administrative part of the budget. Um, the administrative contract is up this year, so we're entirely in talks with the administrative unit, um, reviewing that contract. We'll be coming, uh, for, uh, for discussions about that, um, just, we find the rig data, uh, that is at the end of June before this year. So we did have the resignation of the assistant school principal, uh, previously, uh, this year, um, so we're in the early stages of looking at chapters, individual health, do we backfill, uh, do we need to backfill, so we are already having those conversations. This is months ago, so we've already had those conversations, we'll be recommending to the boards, uh, the board, all we want to do moving forward. And we can handle it, obviously, the board is sour creatures there. Um, and again, the next one, coordinator for student support services, family engagement, fully recommended, so we'll follow that position. And then just other expenses that are going to trickle throughout these, um, three parts of the budget, insurance, insurance. Our biggest expenses are full insurance, both practices and teaching practices. The contributions, the whole procurement system, we're seeing an increase by the end of the year. By the time, uh, we are actually, um, sixty percent increase, uh, year over year, and our two R's, uh, is about, um, half of the same, so. Increases, uh, how that will increase our salaries, uh, so. And then other benefits, just with, um, health, dental, workers' compensation, social security, and all that's associated with, um, salaries, so. Just an overview of that, and the conversation knowing earlier, um, open conversation, uh, see, had a conversation, we had a contract negotiation, um, getting that ball rolling, to see where our expenses is going to go, so it comes back, so we're going to have to kind of, so. That's about the summary of the three-part budget, any questions?
Just one question, and you covered it, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. So, uh, all of those services that we implemented with the helio health, et cetera, in, including the position of, uh, family engagement, all of that money ran out at the end of this school year? I know we started funding this within ourselves, that we would increase that in our budget, but I just want to flush it, is it all running out this year? Or is it running out?
So this year, uh, we're, we're leaving a lot, um, that will be running out at the end of the year.
So, just running out, yeah. So one more, so we have one more school year. So the things like helio health that could be for medical technology?
Like a share.
And if that's, so, are we, if we, if we think that that part is affected, and we want to keep going, are we implementing that or for county, do you have any incentive?
I don't know, I don't mind.
The, the county is also recipient of those federal funds, but we're on a dark county especially, it has been hugely popular, low received, so it'll be a difficult.
But we should probably work under the assumption that they are going to fund it, so that we start self-funding that if we choose to keep it.
Correct.
And if they, and if they report, that's even better, but if none of these were prepared? Got it, okay, sorry, I know there's different timelines, I'm sorry to keep track of it.
That's like a third, third, third. That should, federal government, county, and then Marshall County.
So we have self-funding, it's not, but they are, so, okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Connor? I don't know, with the health and stuff, I mean, they're charging insurance companies, so why is that necessarily a costly district if they had a, or if they, you know? I mean, they're a private organization working in a school that builds insurance.
I think they're, they're subsidized through the county, the, the cost of the individuals, the, the demand for mental health clinicians is enormous right now. And it's not just helio either, it's access and, um,
No, I get it that they're private, they're taken either across them or running anywhere.
Yeah.
So you would think they'd be funded by their organization, their work in a school.
I'm sure they're partially funded that way, but I think the volume of, of clinicians and people deployed throughout the region.
Yeah. Anything else for Connor?
I was on.
Thanks.
Thanks, Connor.
Um, up next, this will be quick, it's just a board of education update. Um, first thing you will see later on the agenda, the governance doc, that the board has gone through multiple times, I've talked about this at all the prior meetings. Um, it's going to be posted to the website, assuming we adopt it tonight, it'll be posted tomorrow under the board section of the website for anyone in the public that wants to view it. It is a, a living document, just kind of our operating rules on how the board conducts itself and how we handle business, um, in relation to expectations, athletes and outside athletes, uh, of course. Uh, so that'll be later on tonight's agenda. The only other thing that I wanted to throw out there, and we can talk about it at the end, um, I'd like us to do a January, um, retreat or workshop, whatever the appropriate one is, I think it's a retreat that allows us to be privately as a board, just to work on, um, board things, kind of do a checkup of ourselves and do a self-evaluation and talk about things that we might want to, um, improve upon for the rest of the year, whether it's communication or participation, or whatever, so we can make some dates, maybe late January, and then work in May, and, um, plan that out. So if we can do that at the end, or I can do, we can do a little poll offline, because there are some availabilities on our calendars, if everyone is on board with that. Um, up next, we have committee updates, um, so curriculum committee, who wants to give that update?
Sure.
Yep.
So we just met prior to this, and, um, and as I mentioned at the meeting, we looked at the, you know, the level of technology that, that we have embraced as a district for the last several years, as one of our own, we, in terms of better preparing our values of students for what's available, of the, but it provides a really good, I mean, it's, it's kind of amazing when you look at it. And the fact that we're using stuff that's, that's professional grade, that's used out in industry.
Yeah.
For example, right, and, um, I do remember when, you know, the whole contemplation of these expenses came up. There was a lot of discussion about, you know, could we have to go this far? And I can tell you, but as competitive as things are, you go right now, we are truly setting up our students for success, and each one is still at an edge. So I would say kudos, uh, I will miss out on this last curriculum committee, so, um, I think job well done, and I think we're trending in the right direction. One comment is that part of all followed, part of all bummed this time, part of all looking forward for the next three to five years, again, a lot of it is technology based. And just like we've talked about, different types of technology, we need to make sure that we are, as a board, looking at things that would keep us on the leading edge and keep, keep that advantage to our, to us to our own, okay, that's it.
So just one
Thanks Brian Franklin, also, uh, incredible job. It's incredibly time-consuming to set all this stuff up, and all of our amazing kids that helped him, and truly learn to operate this independently. Uh, it's a shame you don't get a chance to tour the huge upstairs there for more of the amazing stuff that, that these kids are doing every day, but they're, uh, we talked before about what it, what it does to the school community when you hire an amazing, passionate educator, and how that's infectious to programs and kids. Right, certainly that, so, makes money.
Just one more comment, and this, maybe I could have sent a made board update, but it's about the curriculum committee. The curriculum committee was formed because the community felt that they really wanted to have a stronger curriculum community, maybe again. We've had three or four curriculum committee meetings. Um, one, maybe two people from the community have come to those. The first one, on reading, we had a handful of parents, and they walked out, I was walking into a regular board meeting, and they said, "Oh my God, that was so amazing, and it was so helpful, and I'm so glad I came." And now everybody has fallen off the radar, and that is fine, but we are doing this not for our benefit, I mean, it's our benefit because we learn more, right? But we're doing it because the community said they wanted a curriculum committee, so they could understand better what was going on with our programs, with our science program, with our math program, with our reading program, with our, you know, audio visual, everything that we're doing and the technology around that. So I guess I'm going to put this as a to-do item for Eric and I, to figure out a way to reach out to the community through a parent's part or whatever, and say, "Why aren't you coming? Because you wanted this, and we are so happy to do it, and so happy to show off for you, and give you this one-on-one opportunity with a few teachers and a curriculum coordinator who are there to answer your questions and want to, like, show you their, pull back your tricks, and tell you these awesome things that they're doing." And we come and we set up the table and we smile. It's like waiting for someone to ask you this, I'm like, never asked you. So I, I'm going to test you and I, like, reaching out to them and saying, "What, isn't the time? Isn't the topic? Isn't the location?" Because I'm not sure what, because this was set up to accommodate people based on feedback, and they're not coming. And if it's just that they're not interested, that is okay, but we did this so people could be informed, and we're still waiting for them to come. And we've had three great ones in a row, on very relevant things that our kids are learning. We're still waiting for them to come, so you and I figure out, are we going to give people feedback on that? But we're doing it for them, so let's figure out, if they just don't like us or what.
It could be as simple as the time.
And it could be, and that would be
Five o'clock is a tough time for parents who are
So I guess my feedback would be, no problem. Let us know, I'd love to come, but your time totally stinks. Then we can say, oh, all right, let's reevaluate the time. But silence is silence, and you can't change it if we don't know, so we're going to, I'm giving us that as a to-do, because I would love to see our parents more engaged in this part of it, so that they know what's going on, and then they can ask questions or send back feedback about what's awesome, or hey, I wish we had some more this and less of that, whatever, you know, give us, give us some insight to what you're thinking, so. That's kind of, so, sorry, I just had to tack that on to you.
No, it's perfect.
Your update for tonight. So, next Committee update, the Wellness, Carrie, you went to that? No, I went to that. Dan, where are you at? Okay, we'll see.
Kristen's at a conference, and she'll provide an update.
So she, that would be awesome. And Policy Committee, you want to just give an update?
Yeah, so we are going to do a second reading of the updated policy. And beyond that, we wanted to put out to the Board whether or not there was anything that was in the back of your minds that you kind of wanted us to take a look at, dive deeper, and then, you know, we can share back with you guys on anything that you want us to look into.
Yes, don't know. I mean, our function, our function as a Policy Committee is just to work at your request. So if you say like, "Hey, I think that we need a policy around this," we then we will start around. All right, let's hear it.
I'll share with you. We don't have to share it tonight, I like, but we'll share the details. Has to do with graduation requirements.
Yeah, it's the compulsory add for minors aged sixty, and our policy has aged seventeen. So we're working with students, and for example, trying to fill out an application for a student who decided after a lot of things to go GED, right? There, it's being denied because our policy says the compulsory age is seventeen. But the state's age is sixty. So if you'd like to go get a review of the policy, change it to match the state.
Yeah, all right, we're on.
Just to, it's an easy one, because state, state law always supersedes local or by policy. But it's causing a problem, so easy fix.
We can fix that.
What they call that for policy? So we partner with the Area One OCS's, policy updates go up here. So they develop a monthly quarterly policy update recommendations. So I can send those to, as we go quarterly or whenever they come up. But so they're sent three months by then, and after their policy, sometimes they're changed. We can send them down at very, our Board meetings to change if they want to work.
That would be great. And then ADF Committee.
Next meeting's at nineteen.
So that'll be on the, on the January agenda, so there's no.
Email going out, correspondence about that later in the week.
Nothing says holidays at the ADF meeting. Okay, so if that is it for Committee Updates and there's no more questions, we will move on to new business. First item of new business is the resignation of Tanya Coleman. So I'm going to read the recommend, I'm going to read, actually, I don't comprehend anything. It's just a resignation. So I'm just going to read the action, and then we will just need to vote to accept it, okay? And then we can make a new policy. But, "With regret, the Board accepts the resignation of Tanya Coleman for personal reasons. We're grateful for her service to the community and the district, and we wish her and her family the best." So can I get a motion, I have to ask for a motion on this. Can I get a motion on this? Carrie. Second to Tim, just so people know though, that's the Board of Education. Aware who she is. Yes, sorry, yeah, so Tanya, I was there seven, four members. So obviously, we thank Tanya for her service, and I know this was not an easy decision for her. But, and what I would like to ask the Board before we vote to accept this resignation is, if it is accepted tonight, we'll have to figure out what the next, next steps are. And I don't want to misspeak on what the options for us are to the Board. So I need to take a little time this week, and I will move to up to that meeting or can you ready? Get their advice, get them their kind of laid out from the beginning, and send it all to you guys to kind of digest. And then we will talk at the next meeting about whatever the next steps needs to be as a Board. I definitely want to do that.
Just for informational purposes, I know last election, ten different, ten years and all that. So this is one that will be concluding that evening's year.
Thank you. And I'll make sure that's, we'll put the terms in there. That maybe I'll have to kind of understand everything and make sure we're not too much on that. So if everyone could cast a vote to accept the resignation of Tanya, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Anybody else wants to say anything, feel free. Okay, so I will give back to all you guys without having to get some further information on that. Thank you, Tanya, for your service. Next item, establish extracurricular math club. The Board of Education approves the establishment of a math club and for it to be included in the non-athletic extracurricular salary schedule for the active scanning and continuous participation agreement. Can I get a motion on this? First by me, I will second that. Any questions on the math club recommendation?
Cover two serves.
Is this a high school club, math club?
Yes, it's been going on for years, and they've done a variety of different things. Can't remember the exact affiliation. Like a lot of schools have a math week, and you go to other schools. They, they have a different affiliation.
And you go to like a math contest in?
The American Math Club.
Smart. Wow, okay. All those in favor of approving the math club recommendation, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, awesome. Okay, I'm going to group C, D, and E together. Item C is the retirement resignation of four leave. And the first people up are the resignation of Jamie Jones, the unpaid leave for Kate Hardy, the unpaid leave for Kenny Farago, the unpaid leave for Jessica Walsh. Under D, which is probationary and permanent appointments. It's the probationary, probationary appointment of Megan Martin, English, two speakers of other languages. Approval of a salary for Megan Martin, the appointment of Tina Ward for teacher aide, the provisional appointment of Adam Dix for land technician support specialist. And item E is the substitute for temporary appointments. This is a long one, I'm sure I won't list any names up. Marie Bailey as a substitute, Tracy Dominic as a substitute, Tom Shearer as a substitute, Catherine Kissinger as a substitute teacher, Mary Bearneck as a substitute teacher, Warrington Haas Tehan as a substitute teacher, Tom Kemp as a substitute, Leah King as a substitute, Tom Sell as a substitute, Peter Maloney as a substitute, Seamus Fogarty as a substitute custodial of green groundskeeper, Alicia Bruno as a substitute bus aide, Doug Lewis as the math club advisor. That was everybody. So can I get a motion on C, D, and E grouped together, please? Carrie. Second. Second by Tim. Any questions or comments on all of those?
Yes, we got a notification today of the guidance counselor. I already thought it was the current self-mat continuing from January. So we're going to have just a brand-new person for three weeks.
If we can.
I would say like, is it not a student, is it really worth it? They're not going to build many connections or relationships.
Yeah, the idea was, the employee has the right really to extend at some point.
Oh, absolutely, no, I don't have a problem with that.
Right, so what we were thinking is, if you get somebody in, and if that would happen, that would be a good shape as opposed to, because then to go for the rest of the year, we'd be just starting to try to find someone.
So just a quick timeout on that, that not to, but that is not, that substitute is not on this list. So can I just take that question offline? Just because this is just for the important issues. Gotcha, but okay, good question, I'm trying to make sure it sticks to that.
So Connor, with the E and L appointment, how many teachers, E and L teachers do we have in the district now for twenty-eight students?
Three teachers and one teaching assistant.
We also do have a number of psych students, so that the hours and the requirements for those kids.
I was going to ask that. I remember that one, I was going to add that.
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I know we do. So just to give you a slight interruption. Kids in the MISPA.
Any additional questions on this list? All those in favor of approving all the folks mentioned in C, D, and E, please say aye. Any opposed? And because I rudely cut Carrie off, I wasn't trying to, oh, just, maybe we can take that offline and just explain them, just so that there is no interruption. Okay, item F, CSEA for, be resolved, the Board of Education approves the attached MOA for the Civil Service Employee Association.
Ah, yeah, sorry, I heard.
And it's for Timmy Dunn's MOA here. Can I get a motion on that, please? First by Dan, second by Carrie. Any questions or comments on this?
Wow, she was there when I was. I don't think that, I just feel like she's a better dedicated employee. Who left her, this is much deserved.
She, she, she's inherited quite a few random responsibilities over the years.
Yeah, she was the eighth person when I was.
Okay, all those in favor of approving item F, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes.
Congrats, Timmy.
Congratulations to Timmy. Okay, we're going to group G and H together. G is unpaid school taxes. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the amount of unpaid property tax in each township for Anadaga and Kewa County to be sent to their respective county to be paid in full by H plus interest by April first. And item H is approval of the bid award for the Capitol Valley project. Be resolved, the Board of Education awards the twenty-two, twenty-three Capitol Valley project to PAG and Associates of Oswego for ninety-two thousand six hundred dollars, subject to execution of the contract by PAG and Associates of Oswego in a form approved by the District Superintendent. Be further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to execute the approved contract with PAG and Associates and such other documents as are necessary to commence the work for the twenty-two, twenty-three Capitol Valley project. Can I get a motion on these two items that we can bring them up? First by Amanda, I will second that. Any comments or questions? I will just state for the record, we've stated before, things like the, as relate to the tax collection, there are supplemental documents in our award packets that we see so we can look at all this fun stuff. And when they are available for the public to view, they're also posted online for people that want some. Exciting. Anything else, any other questions, anybody? Okay. All those in favor of D and H, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, now we're on to the really fun stuff. Item I, second reading of policy fifty-two thirty, donations, gifts, and grants to the district. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the Board of Education, and the school district does hereby accept the following policy for second reading and adoption, which is policy five-two-three-oh, donation, gifts, and grants to the district. Can I get a motion on that, please? First by Dan, second by Tim. Any comments or questions on this one? We did read this in part at the last meeting. It's pretty lengthy, but it's an update to an existing donation, gifts, and grants policy. It was also posted on the website for, or available for the thirty days for the public to comment on. Thank you. And it's just kind of cleaning up some language in there. We did use the NISPA recommended policy language to supplement our policy just to make it a little more comprehensive so that we're making sure we're doing things the way we should. Can we take a vote on adopting this policy five-two-three-zero? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that one passes, and that will be updated on the district's website shortly. Okay, next is the Governance Doc. The Board of Education approves to adopt the twenty-two, twenty-three Board of Education Handbook on Governance Practices and Protocols for New and Veteran Board Members as attached. Can I get a motion on this one? Okay, first by Amanda, second by Carrie. Comments or questions on this one?
Appreciate your efforts, putting this together.
Yep, I was going to say the same thing, and a lot of research. Thank you, we can really help as we go forward, having actual document. If we welcome new members, we'll also keep ourselves in check.
Yep, and then this will be, show up again on a Board agenda in the early fall, and will be adopted annually going forward. This is just to get us through to length, we want it to start somewhere and just get a pull on that. So that's the plan, and then future Boards can adjust it as they see fit or make changes or whatever. All those in favor of adopting this Governance, Governance Doc, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes, and Connor will get, so we can get that posted to the website tomorrow. So that will be under the Board of Education section on the school website for anybody in the public that wants some light, thirty-seven-page revenue meeting. Up next, athletic overnight trip for the track and field. Be resolved, Board of Education approves the overnight trip for the boys and girls under our track team from January sixth to January seventh. I am lumping this with L, M, and N, L, K, L, M, and N together. Number L will be donations. Skinny Alice Education Foundation approves the Skinny Alice Education Foundation grants, which we have attached in our Board Packet for hydroponic lighting. Item M is a disposable request for discontinued textbooks. Board of Education approves the disposal of discontinued textbooks can be attached, also in our Board Packet. And item N is the, yeah, the financial reports. We've got the whole list of financial reports in our Board Packet as well. So if I could get a motion on K, L, M, and N together, please? We'll go Dan first, Tim second. Any comments or questions on those items?
Have you ever done this track meet before? I don't know the answer to that. I'll tell my history, it sounds like great experiences.
I feel like they did, because one year they couldn't go because of the weather, and then some parents drove and.
Okay, all those in favor of K, L, M, and N, please say aye. All right, those all pass as well. Oh, sorry, are there any opposed? Okay, just double check. Okay, item O, CSE, CPSC, five oh four reports. The Board of Education arranges for replacement of students with disabilities as recommended by the attached CPSC, CSE, five oh four committee meeting reports. And those are in our Board Packet as well. Can I get a motion? Amanda first, I will second that. Comments, questions on these? Okay, all those in favor of approving these reports, please say aye. Any opposed? That all passes. We are on to the end of the day, a process review. Right now, I would ask the Board to consider, our Board meeting is scheduled for the day that we come back from school holiday break, which means it's really technically like two weeks from now in terms of like a school time. So I'd ask the Board to consider your thoughts on pushing it out to the following week Tuesday, which.
What, ten or what?
Would be the ten or possibly the seventh?
Just, again, the seventh as well, that's the week before that is great, so.
So, so that we can actually have a meeting of substance, whatever, would be okay with pushing it out to the second week in January or the third week, whatever your preference?
We could do an agenda on the tenth, and the fourth, you know, seventeenth, if that works.
Does that work, Dan?
Is that short, is for the February?
I was going to say, I'll check, but I can't guarantee because just because that wasn't on my.
Yeah, is the seventeenth, that was two weeks away from the February meeting, would it be better to do it on the tenth?
That would be three days.
Oh, it's three weeks between, sorry, I'm going to make a count. Tim, any thoughts?
I'm going to be, probably the tenth would be better, like, just, whatever, it's right.
I like the idea of John deciding the first week.
Okay, so let's do that. Carrie, is that going to work for you? Okay, let's go with the tenth, and then we will. Yeah, we will do agenda setting probably towards the end of that week, I would think, just because. Three of you guys are getting right back into your school group that week, so. Some of us are going back Monday. So, you know, we can, we can, let's, let's everyone keep it on your radar for that Thursday. So, uh, you know, we can, we can, let's, let's everyone keep an eye on your radar for that Thursday, but it's only a couple of weeks away, but also a million years away, so we can send out an email and see if we'll be available that week and figure out the folks that'll be at the setting. Does that work for everybody? Okay, so tentative agenda setting that Thursday, whatever that takes, is that the third?
Confirm for the...
What then?
The fifth is the Thursday.
The fifth, eleven, yeah, maybe fourth or fifth, we can do agenda setting and then we'll, we'll do the meeting on that, that sounds... Okay. Great, and then the meeting after that would be February seventh. Okay, uh, we are, uh, second to last item, any announcements, which I just did, February seventh is our next meeting and we are, we're gonna go January tenth, February seventh, and we will update that online and on... We are now at the end and we are at our second opportunity for public comment, and before I read my whole spiel, would you like, are you gonna make comments tonight?
I exist, but other than that, no.
Okay, okay, well, you are welcome to speak if you'd like, uh, but if not, we will skip over the second opportunity for public comment.
Just, just a thank you to the last six administrators that don't have the flu right now. Thank you, Gabe, I appreciate you.
Interesting, until nine fifteen at night.
Anyone want me to throw out some dates for the retreat, maybe try it on, good? Sure, sure, I'll just do a little doodle poll for like, different options and we can figure it out. Yeah, I was thinking Saturday night, but, uh... Uh, if I could get a motion up next is the adjournment of speakers, we can all go home. Oh, Amanda, Amanda moved that, and Carrie's nodding, so, alright, then I'll give the second. So we are adjourned at, uh, nine eighteen. Thank you, everyone, for...